Hi Jackie, can you hear me? Jackie there? Jackie, can you hear me?
And Jackie's still trying to connect audio.
For what Jackie? Yeah, it's in the.
Five three one.
Hey, welcome everyone. The time is now six thirty. I'll call this meeting to the Sunset City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, 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 May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one to order. This meeting is being held in person at the Sunset Community Center and remotely via Zoom conversing application to enable council members, city staff, and residents to participate remotely. The meeting will continue as long as there is a quorum. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask questions. I will now ask the clerk of the area to start a roll call please.
Anybody's need thing?
Want them off?
Okay, let's try it now. Okay.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Counselor Farmer?
Yeah.
Counselor Henry?
Yeah.
Counselor Isucci?
Here.
Counselor Hicks?
Here.
Counselor Park?
Here.
City Governor Casey?
Here.
Yep.
I think someone's mic's on on your tablet. Can you guys double check?
It looks like Counselor Isucci just joined us. Do you want to call his name?
Um, he said here.
Oh, he didn't okay, he didn't hear him.
Oh, he answered. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Finance Director Alba?
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson?
Here.
Police Chief Escalera?
Here.
Public Works Director Fisher?
Here.
Okay, Mayor, we're all here.
All right, thank you. We had do have a forum, so up first in our agenda is going to be a public comment section. Mr. Casey, Jackie, do we have anyone who sent in any comments via email or messages? Perfect. Okay, let me just call this. Make sure that comments that we have to say, okay, this. Okay, persons wishing to speak live during public comments may register. Okay, let me see. Yes, it would be one second. Each speaker, each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak at a time. A time will be visible online to speakers, city council, and meeting participants. Please be advised that there is a time delay between the Zoom broadcast and the YouTube broadcast. Council may refer items to staff for review and a resource for presentation at a future council meeting. So if you were going to do a public comment, please state your name and city of residence and let's listen to you.
I'm Melba Uchiyora from Sunnyside. I'm representing the Sunnyside Mines Department. The Mines Department is asking for five thousand dollars for the Fourth of July. Up until last year, this was a mine eye for your bank. There would be no crowd on the field. People will walk. You don't want anybody to crowd at the time of the. We will. Draw a circle. And. I've had to get knocked out. And. In the bathroom. It's a. And. And that is. And. We've got. Okay, well, I'm not going to say it again. But that's pretty much what I have to say.
You're asking for some point about July.
Yeah, and that's, that's what. You know, so, thank you very much for coming forward and.
Just a moment. Is there additional public comments?
My name's Alex Newhouse. I happen to sit here at Sunnyside on the Appaloosa Valley. I have been working at Sunnyside for the last. Please tell me there is a request for proposal from the city of Sunnyside. We need to discuss that with.
I can't hear anything you're saying.
I'm not, I'm not hearing anything.
I can't hear anything.
We're not hearing the speaker?
For example. Request for proposal was put on. Before it was put on, we have communication to validate. The children's cardio already, they're not coming on RFP. I have them already. Just started looking. Sorry. But this is what we are going to write to our billings, nothing else. I don't care what the state, one court per week.
I'm sorry, we're still having difficult. Jackie, we are not able to hear the speaker.
These communications come from the Sunnyside Police Department. With all rights controlled. My firm, between the attorneys we have, which includes me, the three of us, have experienced everything the city of Sunnyside has done. This is not going the direction where it seems it's going. I'm not upset that I didn't get it. Have you had a convention appeal for the past?
No, I do have. I do.
I do judicial free appeals.
I do watch.
Too much.
Stream court appeals. I do watch appeals. I do the whole.
Even at a time, I don't need to hire anybody to do them.
We are local. Local.
Local.
Baseball. I've lived.
I've lived here, been here, been here.
I've been here when I retire. We are local.
We're local.
I started. Just down street from D. A block. David Darian Tower has a.
I have to buy from this account.
We have.
Send it out to the county.
We know.
We know.
It's a law.
Nobody knows.
We have cases that have been ranging from first degree murder. Driving on license to third. I've had numerous trials, countless lawsuits. So I have been other attorneys in my firm. Admittedly. Foundation was just for the. But even with.
Two with top initial.
I think.
Thirty thousand left.
Your current, current winner. I can't.
Mr. Newhouse, your time is up. You want to wrap it up?
I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
I am not.
I'm not a better than John. I'm not even certain that I didn't even get to the oral presentation phase.
The phase of. I am not upset.
Even those.
Here, you know.
The life that my firm could do.
I tell you. Very minimal.
We will. You know, the three to three dogs.
You're going to take a tree. So by not.
So by not getting it, so I'm not being hurt. I'm not upset by everything being done and.
By giving out.
Giving out. For everybody else.
I have.
I have a package for you.
I'm going to read it. Look at people like.
I don't know what he's.
They could look at the pain that they're experiencing inside their place, but Mr. Real. I asked. When you learn about. I'm never going to respond. As the city manager. Who was on the. Who was on the. Choose. He never got a response.
Mr. Newhouse, we're going to just kind of ask you to wrap it up. Please. Please.
This is a difficult video.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Like, that's enough. I'm just tired. I don't, I don't.
Thank you for the information. We'll definitely look over.
We'll definitely look over the information.
Bring that together for us.
And I would, I would move to. A few more minutes to explain this problem.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, Mr. Alex, Mr. Newhouse, do you want to continue for a couple more minutes?
We can't hear in the gallery. I'm sorry, we can't understand anything he's saying.
Jackie, Elizabeth, talk to her, we can't hear. Okay.
One, five minutes. This is what I'm upset about. It is very.
It is very clear that.
And the city.
And the city was. Helped with Mr. Greater.
I've been, I've been communicating with Mr. Rayburn in his town called about this. The city manager doesn't make sense. From our standpoint. He's pushing the city of Sunnyside down. It's not, not, not. Enough to die. Path. I just want good leadership in my community. Physically conservative, smart leadership. And we don't have that apparently in Mr. Casey. I'm sorry, I speak my mind. I just want to say, can you hear me? I want to take this honest person that's kind of. Prosecute. I want our municipal. Hard force to comply with the law. And I want our municipal. To comply with the law. If you're still convinced. Without the. Location. Who made the decision. To. Get to that. To that part. There's three of us who apply. I didn't even, I didn't even get to that part. We have early notice divided by the police department. And the chief was one of the decision makers. Not good. Not good. In addition. In addition, there wasn't a single attorney on the selection process. Or in the, in the selection process, the selection. I want. Don't you think that's important? This doesn't. Good guys. From the. Just started looking. It doesn't look. And that's all I have to say. I've just asked. Time.
The time. Don't improve anything until you know all the facts.
Thanks again for your information and for coming forward today. Forward today, Mr. Newhouse. Do additional citizens who want to approach the mic and get public testimony today? Just state your name and city of residence for the, for the, please.
Larry Hill, twenty five.
I had a.
Had a.
Farmer. A few months back, gave you some information. Give to the city manager.
I do, I love it.
Because this is coming. Down. So the. Men, men, into. Contact to develop.
Develop. Look into. Look up. Those are.
Now checking.
Two, 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 two.
Company.
Something. Put money down at another.
Another location.
To build. Some. Parts. Cities. Down.
And. Mr. Farmer.
Been running. That's. That's. About. That falls. Falls. I want. I want to see there's a. Oh, my. Take. The home, the fancy. Right over. Farmer. And. I didn't hear. This. No. City. Man doing work. I know Mr. Farmer has. Imagine about the potential business that he could afford to the restaurant.
Instead of when they were going to locate.
That the inspector was in there.
It was full hospital, hospital.
The hospital was getting built.
And I think I talked to Mr. Dixon.
And Mr. Board. After the meeting. If I remember right, correctly.
I don't think they heard anything either in response. I'd just like to know what was going on with it. If it was a false rumor, if these people aren't even interested, or if it was even possible to have a.
A best. A perfect. Place. In the city. Appreciate. Appreciate that if I get an answer one of these days.
Then we have.
On Wall Street. A week ago, riding where there were. A brawl, people got hurt. Somebody tried to run over a person in the car. And that was at the. That was at the end of the street. And. This is. Sorry. Yes, yes.
It's a gang where.
There's a potential problem in the neighborhood.
And that can be like, I don't know, it's a four foot or two foot, but there's so many cars parked around both sides of the truck. On the corner and on the south wall street. Where there's multiple cars there for the size of the population of that. If it's a two foot, maybe it is right, but there's so many car, car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Is your mic on?
No, I have it.
Need it right there. Is your mic on?
You getting feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, all that.
Yeah, I took some notes and it's recorded, so Mr. Mr. Casey's on the line as well. He'll, he'll follow up with you. I'll follow with him to see if there's something we can provide to you. Some of we might, some of that information may not be able to provide to you, but obviously if there is something that we can disclose, we'll see about it.
No, 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 they, we got it.
Yeah, everyone got it. It's just that checking the microphone, there's some feedback somewhere, and we'll make sure that Jackie check and see where it's coming from. Thank you. Okay, is there additional public comment from our citizens? Okay, here now, move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be our consent agenda.
Yes.
It wasn't, I'm sorry. All right, up next we have our consent agenda. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take those a yes. So our consent agenda consists of the minutes. Approved minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty one workshop. Approved minutes of the April twelfth, twenty twenty one regular meeting. Approved payroll vouchers numbers one, one, eight, nine, one, five through one, one, eight, nine, two, one. And wire transfers as listed for four hundred and twenty one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and forty five cents for the period ending on May tenth, twenty twenty one. Claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, one, two, eight, nine through one, zero, one, three, four, three, four, one. And wire transfers as listed for eighty five thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fifteen cents for the period ending on May twelfth, twenty twenty one. Approved claim vouchers, wire transfers as listed for twenty five thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars and eleven cents for the period ending on May twelfth, twenty twenty one. Approved claim vouchers, numbers one, zero, one, three, four, two through one, zero, one, three, seven, nine. And wire transfers as listed for two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty two cents for the period ending on May nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Is there any customers who wish to pull an item or any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, here now, what is the desire of council? Okay, motion by Counselor Henry, second by Counselor Hart to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, here no debate. Our C clerk will now start the roll call vote. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma? Counselor Isucci?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes, yeah.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Park?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, up next we have our active agenda, which first item is title six, non discrimination agreement and annual report. Consider authorizing a city manager to execute task order twenty twenty one dash oh four. Title six, non discrimination agreement and annual report with HLA engineering and the amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of council. This items comes from Public Works Department. This is a required report that we must complete in order to continue receiving federal funding. Or as a result of having received federal funding for transportation projects. The report or the NDA has to be updated as a result of changes in administration. We've provided a general overview in the packet along with a copy of the scope of work. And Public Works Director Fisher, I can be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, council, we'll go down our list and see if there's any questions or comments on this item. We'll start with Deputy Mayor Burisma.
I have no questions, sir.
Counselor Isucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Hicks? Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart? And I don't have any questions either, so there'll be no questions or comments. What is desired council on this item? Okay, motion by Counselor Henry, second by Counselor Hicks to authorize the city manager to execute task order twenty twenty one dash oh four. Title six, non discrimination agreement and annual report with HLA engineering and amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Is there any debate on this item? Here no debate. We'll go ahead and have roll call please.
Mayor, get it on?
Yes, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Park?
Counselor Isucci?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Farmer? Counselor Hart? Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, up next we have our prosecutor contractor award. Consider authorizing a city manager to sign and execute an agreement for prosecution services with Bell, Brown, and Rio. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll preface my remarks to acknowledge that unfortunately, because of the audio issues, I was only able to hear fragments of Mr. Newhouse's comments, so I'm not sure that this overview will be able to respond to the questions or comments that he posed, but hopefully there's enough information here for councils. Deliberations. As councils aware, we have had a contract in place for prosecution services with current contract holders since twenty thirteen. The contract was last adjusted in twenty seventeen when this city added the top parish court activities to our workload. Is currently. We're currently paying approximately eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars a month for prosecution services. Since this had been an extremely long time without competitive solicitation, and this contract was itself awarded without a competitive process, it was done on an emergency basis back at the time. And in looking at our court services and recognizing that our, in addition to our prosecution services, the contracts for judge and for public defenders would also be coming up in the next, over the next couple of years. We decided to go forward with kind of a staged update to all of these contracts for services, starting with prosecution. Originally planned to get started on this in twenty twenty, COVID nineteen pandemic caused enough disruption to the court that we didn't feel, I didn't feel it was an appropriate time to try to do that in the midst of all of that. But as we emerged from the pandemic this year and resumed in-person court operations, we rekindled that process. In March, we released an RFP that had been developed based on research with MRSC and with the review and refinement of the city attorney in terms of the scope of work and the level of services and we issued some clarification on. And we issued some clarification on April 14th and proposals were due April 28th. We received three proposals and listed firms there, you've seen those from Kenneth Raiber, who's our incumbent prosecutor. Bell Brown and Rio and from New House and Power. We had selected three, excuse me, in addition to myself, we selected three evaluators for the proposals. Looking primarily at their ability to be responsive to the very thorough requirements set forward in the RFP. They included the Toppenish City Manager Lance Hoyt, as well as our Police Chief Alice Calera and our Finance Director Elizabeth Talba. We each independently scored the three proposals and came together on May 6th to add up the scores, average them, and come up with the aggregate scoring for the top categories, which basically are focused on. We focused first on their qualifications to meet the scope of work required and called for in the proposal. Their background, their experience. We also asked if they were not the incumbent firm for them to provide a transition plan for how they would smoothly step into the services going forward. And then based on those scores, we determined which firms would go forward to the next phase, which would be oral interviews and evaluation of the cost proposals. This had been the structure of the scoring that we set out at the beginning. And part of our objective, since this is professional services, was to make sure that all the firms that we were seriously considering scored high enough on the basic qualifications and background and experience. To and responsiveness to the RFP to be able to go forward. Two firms were selected from that based on the scores to go forward. They were interviewed on May 13th and 14th. And following those presentations, we completed our scoring and we've provided that information in the attached. Based on that process, the unanimous selection of the panel was Bell Brown and Rio as the apparent successful proposer. And so we contacted them, provided, had provided the firms a copy of the proposed contract. Discussed with them, kind of finalized the service and compensation and have brought that to you for consideration today. Their proposed monthly flat rate is 13,500. This does reflect five full days of court appearances. It is within our current adopted budget for 2021. If this were to go forward and be adopted and implemented as of July 1st. We've also set it for a shorter time period than the existing contract, which was, as I said, adopted on an emergency basis. It was a one-year agreement that then had a 30-day notice requirement. So it's just simply continued perpetually for every 30 days until stopped. This one has a chance to give us a review of it sooner. We would look at it in two years and then has the option for up to three one-year extensions upon mutual agreement. That'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Casey, for the update on this agenda item. We'll start down our list with questions or comments and we'll start with Counselor Restucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not hearing what, what Mr. Newhouse said, Mr. Mayor, I do have some concerns. Mr. City Manager, I'm not questioning your ability. I appreciate everything you've done, sounds to me like this was done fairly. But I am concerned about transparency and if Mr. Newhouse has submitted some documentation that he wants council to look at. I think we probably should do that and I would, I, I'm not moving yet, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to see us postpone this till the 6:14 meeting.
Counselor Henry?
Jackie, I'm sorry, I can't hear Counselor Henry.
I'm afraid to talk too loud, to be honest.
Sorry, my apologies.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool. I actually have a moment. Documents that were given to council and I would also like to postpone this item or have it. What's inside is quite interesting, so that's why I was asking that, thank you.
Counselor Hicks?
Paulie?
Counselor Farmer?
Counselor Farmer? Yes, can you hear me? I have several comments and several concerns. I originally got a email from Mr. Newhouse. Councilmember C.C. Ron also, and he was quite concerned and this, and what he brought up concerned me greatly. So I did ask the city manager to make public, to me at least, and I think he did to the rest of the council, all of the letters and proposals that were given. And I'm gonna probably just copy what Mr. Newhouse said and a few things, but his, his, his proposal was $6,125. And it did not include Toppenish. Mr. Raiber's contract was 11,500 for Sunnyside and in addition, $5,000 for Toppenish. Bell Brown and Rio, in their proposal, was a flat $12,000 amount. And that, and I, and I couldn't read whether that included Toppenish or not. Plus there was a hundred dollars of, an hour for, if there was a problem with, they were not able, because of confidentiality or some other thing, able to represent us. And now, and now the contract is for 13,500 a month plus the hundred dollars for conflicting attorneys, is what they call it. We received an email regarding who had been contacted for services by the city. I would ask the city manager, would we contact anybody besides Bell Brown and Rio?
So to the two points, just to clarify, the Bell Brown and Rio proposal, as I mentioned, was originally 12,000. We determined that there had been an inadvertent oversight of the Wednesday court appearances. And so we settled on a final amount of 13,500. That is to cover both Sunnyside and Toppenish. So the total charge from Bell Brown and Rio on a monthly basis will be 13,500. Total charge from the Raiber proposal was 16,500, which is why they were scored lower. That proposal was scored lower on, on cost. It was a higher, higher cost. In terms of the hourly charges. All contracts typically have a rate for conflict attorneys. It has been our experience that many, several of the attorneys, including the judge in the court, have, you know, extensive histories, experiences and practices in, in the valley. That has not been quite as common with Mr. Raiber, but that is something that is a fairly standard issue or standard element of a contract of this type. Bell Brown and Rio, however, have not been doing defense work for well over 15, 20 years. They have almost no conflict issues come up and except in the rare instances where a case has involved one of the city employees, one of the cities for which they are prosecuting. So the incident rate with which that comes up is rare for them. And then with regard to outreach, the official outreach done by the city was through the advertisements that I directed the city clerk to post. We advertised in The Sun, in the Akama Herald, and in the Tri-City Herald and on our website. I don't know if other city employees. Did other outreach, or I should say, other city employees may have done other outreach that was not at my direction or request.
Bell Brown and Rio requesting them to submit a proposal from the police department. I find it disturbing that this was the only phone that was contacted by the city. And then, and then to have somebody from the police department actually sit on the review board disturbs me greatly. The, the contract with Bell Brown and Rio break out Toppenish as a separate fee, or is it all lumped into one?
It did not break out Toppenish as a separate fee, no, it is one flat fee for the total scope of work.
What would happen if Toppenish decided they didn't want to be in our court anymore? Are we still on the hook for the 13,500 that we signed the contract for, even though Toppenish would not be in court?
So Top, we already, we currently work through an agreement, an interlocal agreement with the city of Toppenish. And they reimburse us for certain services associated with, with court. If Toppenish were to make the decision to stop using the Sunnyside Court, then that would be a material enough change that we would revisit the fee structure. Their fee structure is based on the dates and, and, you know, the workload and times associated. If it changed significantly like that, then we would enter into negotiations to amend the contract and adjust the accordingly.
It would only make sense to me, and I have not had the term, to have that in the contract for Sunday contract. With, with a big open like that. The other question, since this is higher than what we've been paying before, are we going to raise our fees to the city of Toppenish for the additional costs that we are going to incur?
We have not had discussion with them whether this would require a ways, a raise of the fees to the city of Toppenish. It, it is close enough or fairly close to the amount that we're currently spending and budgeting on an annual year. But until we get to see a full year or get a contract in place, it was, would be premature. Elizabeth, do you have some comment on that?
Actually, they pay a proportionate share based on their caseload.
So. Automatically.
It'll go up automatically based on the number of cases that are heard in the courtroom. So if Sunnyside has 100 cases for the month and Toppenish has 100 cases for the month, then it's shared 50/50. And it's go, it's on a month-by-month basis based on the workload. So their share will go up with this contract if the price increases.
Should this not be something that we want to include in our contract before we sign a contract?
That's sure I understand that, or heard the remark. That, that's governed under the agreement that we have with Toppenish. So regardless of what rate we set here, that agreement with Toppenish is a separate agreement and already in place. And Toppenish is aware of this proposal and its pricing structure. And they, the, the Toppenish City Manager did take part in this process and supports this recommendation.
I, I don't like, I do like, I think anytime you talk about the legal contract, it needs to be in line with you. And I could not support anything in a contract that, well, we talked about it, well, we'll negotiate. No, it needs to be in the contract when the contract is signed. Then you have something to fall back on to negotiate.
So Mr. Counselor Farmer, if I'm understanding, what would be helpful to you and which we could discuss with Bell Brown and Rio would be a provision to the contract that clarifies that if the scope of work changes significantly. I.e. if the city of Toppenish were to withdraw its services, we would renegotiate the fee structure accordingly. That seems like a reasonable provision to propose and I'd be happy to take that to them and discuss that.
Okay, now I'm saying it's kind of a little bit off of this, but I know.
You don't, I mean, you've everyone's microphones again? Okay, let's, let's try again. Yeah, you go ahead, try again, please.
There, this is a little bit off the path, but I still think it's very appropriate. When we get our budget for this coming year, one of the things that I asked about was, in-house, if, if we combine the Bell Brown and Rio contract with the Ferguson contract billing, Ferguson's contract just for billing this month. It puts our monthly legal bills for these two firms at 1,755 bucks times 12, that's 210,000 dollars. I think we need to look at where we're spending our money. I think this is a contract that we might be able to do it different and, and say this is the money. I think, I think we need to talk about and consider hiring and returning. And if we sign this contract at this rate now, we're stuck in this thing for two more years. And, and, and I don't like, I don't like this contract at all and cannot support, that's all.
Okay, up next, we have Counselor Hart.
All right, moving. We can't hear.
apologies, Jackie, we cannot hear Counselor Hart.
They can't hear you, one moment. Try again.
I'm of the opinion we should pull this item and investigate a little bit further on how exactly the, yeah. Actually solicited, have a funny feeling about how they were solicited. Can't really put any finger in it, but if the police chief was involved in that in some fashion or someone from his department. That seems like to me a little bit of cherry picking who the candidates might be. And I don't think that that's a good thing. I'm really disturbed that a person who is in our community
Okay, up next, we, next we have Deputy Mayor Burisma.
So I have, no mystery, how he talks all the time. And he doesn't make the type of strong comments that he makes this evening lightly, likely. Obviously, the packet that he handed to us this evening, I've not been able to skim through very quickly, but I've not had a chance to read it yet. And just based on what I see from what I've skimmed and what I've heard him say. I would like, I think, also to pull this out of tonight's agenda to give us a chance to read through this material and the other material that is available for us. So that we can have a better understanding of what's going on, because it does seem to be some questions. And if, if they have basis, I think we need to deal with them. So I also would agree that we pull this together.
Okay, thank you. So, so it sounds like there was a total of four interview individuals who scored this independently from each other. And I do see some emails where there's some, obviously some questions about communication between our police department. Communication between our police department and one of the applicants. And of course, you know, I I agree that there is some some concerning, some. Some after concern on this. And again, with like anybody else, I want to make sure that we are being transparent with our applicants. And obviously, Mr. Newhouse, who is obviously not the selected party today, but feels like he was a strong candidate. And. I don't question at all the validity of the numbers or the scoring for the sheet itself. I do see that it is quite a bit off from the top to the lowest. And having four different individuals. Scoring it independently and then adding them up altogether. To me, it sounds like a fair process. Again, I wasn't involved in the process, but to me, it makes sense. There was no, you know, getting together with other individuals and trying to come up with a better candidate than the other one. So I I feel confident the process was fair. There are some questions, obviously, from our council members, Mr. Newhouse that got brought up. So I do support the fact that we can. To push this over to our next next agenda meeting, which in this case would be. On. For June fourteenth or or the workshop, because it sounds like all of us are in agreeance that we need to push this a little bit out.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sutuji, yes.
Thank you, sir. Sir, pursuant to council's procedure, I would move that we postpone item one B or three B to the June fourteenth regular agenda.
Is there an objection to us moving this to our council meeting for June fourteenth? Here, you know, objections, so order, Mr. Casey, if you could please brief us a little bit more on some of the questions that council members have. And if council members, you have specific questions for the city manager to address to you, please reach out to him. Now we hear he has a better understanding of what is that your concerns are. And hopefully get them addressed, we could review this again on our June fourteenth meeting.
Very well.
Okay, up next, we have our Hector Salgado annexation. Consider adopting an ordinance to complete the annexation process for parcels twenty-three, ten, thirty-two. Dash three, one, four, zero, nine, twenty-three, one, zero, thirty-two. Dash thirty-one, four, oh, one, twenty-three, ten, thirty-two. Dash thirty-one, zero, zero, seven, and twenty-three, ten, thirty-two. Dash thirty-one, zero, zero, six, located on the north side of Yakima Valley Highway. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. This is the final step of the annexation process. It's a a a dance with many steps to it. And this one began a while ago with a petition. The petition was signed by Mr. Salgado and and others. It was brought to the Planning Commission, supported there, is brought to the City Council and supported there. And was then sent to the Boundary Review Board, which conducted its process, which includes a period for public comment or turn. After hearing back from the Boundary Review Board, their review period expired with no objections. And so they are prepared to allow this to go forward. So the final step is adoption of an ordinance, completing the annexation process, which we then will follow with county. And and that will come, will will bring this into the city. If the council follows through with that recommendation. I believe I saw earlier that Planning Supervisor Shuttleworth, yes, he was on the call and is available if you have any questions or or need more information. Reminder about any of the information on this particular annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Casey, and we'll go down our list for questions or comments on this item, and we'll start with Counselor Henry. Counselor Hicks. Counselor Farmer. Counselor Hart.
Already forgot where it's between. Both the Creed and Joseph Rose, that's correct. So it's on the south side of. Is your mic on?
He was asking if it was on the south side of Polland Road, I believe. Allen Road, sorry. Yes.
Yes, it's south of Allen Road and north of YVH.
And and this property is is B two, correct?
Correct, that's that's the zoning destination that was placed on it.
Just if I remember, is that commercial or residential?
Commercial, B two is commercial zone, the general commercial, basically.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Brosma.
I have no question.
Counselor Restucci.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't have any questions either. So what is the direct counsel on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt an ordinance to complete the annexation process for parcels two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, four, zero, nine. Two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, four, zero, one, two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, zero, zero, seven. And two, three, one, zero, three, two, three, one, zero, zero, six, located on the north side of Yakima Valley Highway.
Okay, we have motion by Counselor Henry, a second of a counselor is to cheat to adopt an ordinance, complete annexation process for the parcels just mentioned. Located on the north side of Yakima Valley Highway. Is there any debate on this item? Your debate, can please get roll call vote on this item?
Mayor Gareto.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brosma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Henry.
Yeah.
Counselor Hicks.
Yeah.
Counselor Farmer. Counselor Hart.
Yeah.
Mayor, there's seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next in our agenda, we have Airport Master Plan Contract Award Update. Receive an update on the Airport Master Plan Contract Award. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Public Works Director Fisher has been moving forward with the process for the Airport Master Plan. Recently, the FAA adjusted some of the scope of the proposed work as we were going through that bid process, which. Has kind of worked in our favor in the sense that is it is, it has been simplified somewhat. But we are very close to being able to bring back an award to you. Just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on on where we were at in that process and likely bringing it forward for your consideration at June fourteenth. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Yeah, so right now, what we're waiting for, we're basically on Friday late afternoon. We got information back from both consultants to do the independent fee estimate. And so at at that time, we weren't really, we weren't really sure if we would receive the information in time. And so basically, what what happened late Friday is I had a conversation with FAA. We took a look at both vendor scopes of work. We worked out all the details on it. And then as of about ten o'clock this morning, I did get an email from FAA that did approve it. So we are ready to go for the June fourteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we'll go down our list for questions or comments. Counselor Hicks. Counselor Farmer.
No question.
Counselor Hart.
I'm just very excited to see this moving forward, so. Let's get down, let's get her down.
Deputy Mayor Brosma.
Like Counselor Hart, sir, I am excited to see this moving forward. I'm a big fan of long range planning. Trying to get ahead of things, so that moves it forward.
Counselor Restucci.
As Vice Chair of the Airport Board, I'm excited to see this happening. This is a long time coming. We definitely need to renew our plan. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with the FAA and the Airport Board to get this done.
Counselor Henry. And I don't have any questions or comments either, so move on to our next agenda item. Item from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I don't have any at this time, so we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is going to be council request status report, Mr. City Manager.
All right. I think on the first item, the accessible parking for the senior center councils where. Leave the week, last week or the week before, I forget which one now. We did get word back from the AARP that they are rejecting or denied our grant application for eighty-five thousand for this. So we are folding that project into the group of activities or projects, potential budget enhancements that council may wish to consider in its. Second quarter budget amendment coming up here in in deliberations in June and July. See if we can't figure out how to perhaps fund that out of city resources. But we we did not get the AARP grant for that. We just learned that this month. On the tree replacement plan, that work is continuing. The residents have no doubt seen some of the signs of activity around town as we've been grinding stumps and clearing out some of the tree wells. Both in sidewalks and and city parking lots. And so. Public Works will be coming back with replacement trees, hopefully here in a few weeks with the plan for for that. Councils aware that. We're working with HLA on a safety plan. That was a prerequisite, a requirement in order for us to apply for the DOT funding for guardrail improvements. And so we are. Moving forward on that, and I don't believe we have any new information on the safety plan process unless unless you have something, Director Fisher.
No, I have no update on that at this time.
Okay. And then. I don't think we have any further updates on the police reserves. And we had responded on the Roger Brooks presentation back in March, so we don't have any further information on either of those items. That would be the summary of the council request status report.
Thank you. Council members, is there any additional items you'd like to see on the council request status report?
I have a couple. I've been asked, are we going to have a green cleanup? I think we briefly talked about this a meeting or so ago.
Yes.
We are, do you have a date for that?
I'll defer that to Finance Director Alba. I believe she'd been working with the planning and permitting technician on figuring out a cleanup. Plan.
So before we were notified that we may have changes coming July first. We were working on a voucher system where we would give a voucher to residents to be able to take their stuff to the transfer station. But now there's a possibility that we'll be a little bit more open and have the ability to actually do it in Sunnyside. We're trying to get that scheduled for July or August, so it may be a summer cleanup or an early fall cleanup. But we are, we are getting something going.
Council, do you want this in the request report?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, if you could get that added so that we've got an update until it happens, that would be appreciated. You said you had another item, Counselor Farmer?
And and I brought this up several meetings ago. Our water tower does not have Sunnyside on it. Drive through the valley every time the valley has their name on their water tower, that's Sunnyside. I I think it's something that we need to plan on doing. I did talk to a member of the Arts Committee and they had even talked about it in the Arts Committee. And maybe even have some kind of design on it besides just Sunnyside, I think. We'd be proud of our city and this is one way of telling people this is Sunnyside, so. I guess we'll put this on the status report also.
Okay. Public Works Director has been, has looked at that in the past and will continue to. Continue to do so and we'll look at, I believe the quote he gotten as part of the rehabilitation project, that was about thirty thousand dollars, which was outside the scope of funding we had for that project. And so we have had conversations with some members of the Arts Commission, I know in the past. And can certainly kind of keep that front and center. As a, as a, as a potential project going forward.
Okay, any additional for our council request status report? Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious about all of the racing. Through town on most of the night of the week, not just safe for Saturday someday anymore. Cruising is God knows, family, and I'm wondering what we are doing for traffic, traffic surveys in the candidate. And use of the. The big catcher is this one, I wonder, she tells you how fast you're going. And I'm wondering if that thing used around the candy, there's a number of places. Lincoln Avenue, north of Sixth Street, that before you get to First South Street. Is really dangerous there, residential and outside of. How much on the other, so I'd like to see something done and put on your reference to traffic data.
I can speak to part of that. Counselor Hart, the Public Works Department does have, I think he is the speed catcher. Yes, there's a mobile device that we're able to deploy around town that flashes what speed you're traveling and kind of. Alerts has a little bright strobe if you're going above the posted speed limit. It typically will try to deploy it to a particular location for about two weeks so that it has a bit of an impact on on slowing people down in that area. Public Works does move it around in response to calls or requests for it to be placed somewhere based on, you know, neighborhood needs. I know it was on Edison for a while and I don't remember where I saw it last, but anyway. We're happy to kind of keep that rotating around town to help provide that deterrent effect. It does sort of catch people's attention well, and and it does have an effect in slowing folks down. Police Chief Fabs Calera, is there anything your department has to add as far as what you're observing with regard to cruising and and street racing activity?
No, I mean, that's other than the, we we do have some speed complaints in particular neighborhoods. Nothing that that I've heard of, doesn't mean that it has not been reported to the police department, but nothing that I've been hurt or told about as far as the racing goes. Cruising, I think it's something that's always happened, but I'm not sure to what extent. So unfortunately, I'm not able to provide any current or relevant update to that, as I haven't heard anything regarding the racing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's probably not possible. So I like, I like.
And Counselor Hart, when you say surveys, are you talking about surveying our police department or? To see the manager and try to coordinate what it is that we're trying to accomplish, see if that's an option and see if we can get that addressed.
Yeah, I do know that we have done in the past and traffic counts, the traffic counters. But Director Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's just, those are just counting devices on various streets and intersections. I don't know that. I don't know that they actually gather data on speed is, is, do you know if that's part of that technology?
Yeah, they, they don't, it's just purely a count and classification, so they can tell if it's a car or a, or a semi or a box truck or something like that, but they don't, they don't pick up speed.
Yeah, we do those through YVCOG, they've done a number of traffic count studies for us.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Councilor Hicks?
Do we have the ability on our full speed device to take photos over certain mile power?
The, the current device that Public Works has does not, does not have a camera on it. To my knowledge, is that correct, Director Fisher? It's just, it's just a passive readout of the speed.
It, it will, it will take a photo, but the photo does not, well, the photo does not take a picture of the driver or the license plate. Alls it does is will tell you, basically you see the color of the car. It's even, the cameras, it's even tough to pick out the make and model of the car. Basically, it's just color at that point.
Is there a way to upgrade the camera?
You know, I don't know, I can, I can, I can talk with all traffic solutions, see if we can upgrade the camera that's in the unit, it's all one, one unit. It's definitely worth the, worth the phone call.
Okay, thank you. Director Alba has a comment?
Didn't we have one that was on the road that used to have the gate that had some, something that you could get online and see speeds? I'm not sure what road that was, but it's the one that used to connect to, or it still connects to South Hill and there was a gate on South Hill, but there was a being speed data.
Yeah, you can collect speed data and that's how we determine if there's, if it warrants the, drawn a blank now, and like speed humps, you know, those type of traffic mitigation measures. So if you have speeding that, that is in excess of, you know, in that eighty-five percentile, if you have, you know, you exceed that, then that warrants having other measures put in. And so we, yeah, we can't, we can't capture the data, we only have one unit. So to capture all those streets, it takes a while to get the data put together to where it's, it's, you know, if you can analyze it. And then me and Chief Escalera have had a couple of conversations early on, I think at the South Hill and Saul Road area is where we, I think is where you're talking about, Director Alba. And, but yeah, it is, we can put a, a, a counter out there and to, to, to count cars and speed. And then from there, we can, we can move forward with the next, the next step in the process.
All right, it sounds like there's some work already going on with our police department to try to get some of those areas of concern with high speed. So it sounds like that might address some of the concerns. And I think Councilor Hart's going to touch base with our City Manager and try to figure out if that might be something that might help out.
Very good.
Okay, up next we have our other reports, announcements and our questions by council. We'll start with a Councilor Farmer. Okay, Councilor Hart? Deputy Mayor Brosnan?
Yes, thank you. We received a really good presentation on the growth management plan and how that relates to our comprehensive plan that we're, that we're starting to work on. So I, I appreciated that information greatly. It, it helped clarify a couple of things in my head, even though it was from, you know, as we say, the thirty thousand foot level. It helps to have that information, so that was a good and actually productive meeting. The other items I have are two things that are kind of related, one of them sort of speaks to, to Councilor Hart, this is bringing up a few minutes ago, that was speed. We have a speed issue around town. I received a phone call from a citizen who was quite upset about traffic speed on Outlook Road as coming from Outlook into Sunny Side, he was to the point where he could list off individual cars with license plate numbers and say these vehicles are coming into town, maybe thirty-five mile an hour, but then in excess of eighty miles an hour, and this is a daily occurrence. So I think that, as Ms. Hart said, we have a problem. And this is something that we really need to step on before somebody gets hurt or even worse, killed. So I would be behind some sort of enforcement that would protect the safety of people as Sunny Side. Secondly, Saturday night, anybody who stepped outside Saturday evening was in danger of losing an hearing. There was a party going on, on a street on the north side of the hill of Sunny Side that music was loud enough to rattle windows several blocks away. And at about nine-thirty, I started getting phone calls and texts from neighbors complaining. And I called the police department to find out what was going on. And they were very patient, said they also had received a fair number of calls and complaints about this. Apparently, this group of individuals had received a noise variance that was valid until ten-thirty and decided to take full advantage of it. And I commend them for, for taking the proper steps. However, I do have a problem with noise variances going out into residential areas. I understand that that works well for if we're going to have a special concert going on in Centennial Square or the carnival over at St. Joe's or something along those lines. But I don't think our noise variance should apply to house parties. The neighbors should have a right, in fact, I believe they have a right, to be able to enjoy some peace and quiet at their own home. And one of the individuals who texted me said that they literally were forced to leave their house to find some peace. And I don't think that is fair to the neighbors. So while those people who held that party went through the right process, a residential party is no place to issue a noise variance. So there's, there's my rant for the evening, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Restucci?
Just echo with the city, with the deputy mayor said about the noise ordinance, I too received complaints from citizens in regards to the noise. I'm not sure on the, on the details of the noise variance, but I definitely want to look into that as well.
If I may, the current ordinance doesn't specify residential versus non-residential, although and so it's been a little hard to figure out, okay, where, where those boundaries are. Just that it otherwise complies with that. So I think it certainly can make sense if council's guidance is that it would prefer that that really be limited to like the commercial zones or something like that, commercial light industrial rather than residential zones. I will say that over the last two and a half years, at least that I've reviewed them, there have been about, oh, maybe a dozen a year. They don't come in often, but at least half of them have been for requests for things like graduation parties, quinceañeras. This weekend, it was someone completing their medical degree and wanting to celebrate, and so about, about half of them have been in residential areas. Most have not had the kind of extreme noise that was associated with this one. But as a general rule going forward, not considering those that come from residential areas, certainly seems like a reasonable step to take.
Mr. City Manager, a quick question. Regardless of whether or not they have a noise ordinance, there's still a point where they're creating a nuisance, correct, and the police could stop them?
Well, the police are somewhat limited in their ability to do this because in order to issue a citation or make a charge stick, they have to be able to provide objective evidence in court. Just shutting it down and then being challenged on the basis of someone's perceived hearing, it, it, those don't tend, those, those don't tend to stand up to scrutiny. We have looked at acquiring the equipment that would be necessary to provide a court-approved decibel reading. It's, it's not inexpensive, that's certainly something we could take another look at.
I, I thought when we passed the noise ordinance a number of years ago and the public, you know, basically told us that we had killed the ice cream man. Exactly, yeah, we, we all, we had this conversation in depth, I think Mr. Farmer was on the council at the time. And one of the things we agreed upon was that it would be the officer's discretion on site. So like for instance, when it came to boom, you know, noise coming from a car or something of that nature. Because we didn't want to have to purchase that piece of equipment. So couldn't an officer make a call at the site? I mean, it was loud enough that I could hear it here and that's three blocks away.
They could, I'll, I'll follow up with Chief Escalera, as I said, my initial conversations on this was, that was the issue that was raised. The concern is that we don't have that enforcement, I guess, but I'll follow up with the chief on that.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Hicks?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Getting their medical degree, obviously, it's, they went through the proper steps to gain the noise variance. It sounds like some neighbors obviously were not happy about the noise and I don't think I would be either. So it sounds like we have to revisit this somehow and try to accommodate the peace and quiet that some, our citizens require and need or want. And obviously balance that with individuals need to have some social gathering and, in their houses. So let's look at that into the future, so that's definitely an area for, for us to work on. My announcements that I have, I was able to attend a Yak Corp's operational board meeting this past May thirteenth in Yakima at the, you know, Gap, some com, com, courtroom. They talked about our, the bylaws for that, these two groups. They elected a, a chair for the Yak Corp group. And this came out to be Keryan, one of our, the Yakma Sheriff's Department's staff members. They do talk a lot about all of our systems that we use in our cities and the county from just wear systems to spillman. So it's very informative, very, a lot of good information. And I'm looking forward to the next meeting, I know there wasn't quite a good attendance in the past. So we're looking for additional members to be part of it. We are tasked with trying to get another council member, I mean, I'm in, uh, city, uh, mayor from the lower valley, a smaller city. And I'm not sure if our chief, our fire chief or police chief are, are part of this, but obviously it's some, some of the equipment that they use. And they have a pretty large budget, which we contribute a decent amount to, to be able to utilize these licenses for these items. So it's definitely beneficial, I know Counselor Restucci was a founding member of this group and he's very knowledgeable in this, in this group. But I found it interesting and it was a lot of good information, so I want to report that. The next item we attended, I attended, I think Mr. Casey was there as well, was the meeting with the governor's office representative for this region. They talked about this whole mask. CDC require, well, not require, but option of not wearing a mask if you're fully vaccinated. They had a lot of good information, but they were as unable to answer questions as we were. So I know at the time they were talking about updating their, the state's recommendation for masking and open areas and fully vaccinated individuals. So that was also information that was relevant to what we are obviously facing here in town. Even businesses, I'm sure they, they have questions as far as do we have to wear a mask, do we not have to wear a mask? Do we ask them if they have been vaccinated or not? So a lot of those questions are going to try to get answered by these individuals, I'm not sure when we'll get that document or if it already came out, I haven't checked. But obviously that was an interesting meeting as well. One item that I do have, a couple, couple individuals in town asked me about our street, uh, street chip ceiling. I know in the past we had deferred some of our maintenance for our streets. It sounds like we are getting a little bit better footing on our budget and I want, I'm wondering if that's something we can try to wrap up a little bit, Mr. City Manager, in the future? So that way we don't let our streets degrade to the point that we have to replace them. I know Mr. Fisher had mentioned that we are pretty good about keeping our, our cheap chip ceiling schedule aligned with maintenance, maintenance of our streets. And I did see a couple of people, I did talk to a couple of people who mentioned that it seems like we are kind of falling behind a little bit in that, in that mark of our streets. They mentioned a couple of streets, but I think I'll just touch base with you, Mr. Casey, in the future, so that way try to, it was added to the list and possibly take a look at them and see if they could put them in our budget for future chip ceiling or maybe even try to extend a little bit this year if the funds are available for that, that option.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
You may also want to look on the six-year transportation improvement plan because we would outline maintenance there as well.
And I think those are for main roads, not side streets, is that correct, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, the, the six-year tip is just for Beverly classified roads. And we just to let everybody know, we are chip sealing this year. So we'll, we'll crack fill in June and then we plan on doing several miles of streets this year in July.
Mr. Fisher, is that going to be enough to get us somewhat caught up with the deferred maintenance that we did in the past?
Um, no, no, we've got some, we've got some catching up to do. We've, we've kind of, we, we forewent a lot of the, you know, during, sorry, my dogs are barking. We kind of forewent some of that in years past when things were tight, so we weren't able to, to, to do it. But we were normally on about a seven or eight year turnaround to get back to the streets and now we're at about a thirteen, twelve to thirteen year turnaround to get back on a, on a street. So the plan is, it would be nice is to be able to, these years coming up to double up, instead of doing two or three miles, maybe try to do, you know, four or five miles in a season. Which is a tall task for, for my staff, but, but we can do it, we are, we are capable. We have the equipment, it's just, it would be a much longer chip seal season and it would be thirty, you know, we'd have some citizens would be upset about, about the, the, you know, because it is a little bit cumbersome. We have to come in, everybody move their cars and, but regardless, it is doable, we can't, we can't catch up. We just got to plan it and then budget for it.
Just one last question, would it be more cost efficient to try to get caught up or try to let some of those streets degrade to the point that we have to replace them?
Yeah, we don't really want to let them degrade. It's, because you're, you're talking, you know, I don't even know what the number is these days, but it used to be roughly about a million dollars a mile for, to, to overlay a road. And a, a prime example is Midville Road, that's about a two, two-point-one million dollar project and that's only about a mile and a quarter long. So if, if chip ceilings, it's a cheap way to go and I think playing catch-ups, the, the, I think it's the, the best approach. Otherwise, we're, we'll, we'll be spending several million dollars a year to, you know, if we have to start replacing roads completely. And the other, the other side of that is if we were to go out and let's say if we were to sub that out to something like granite or one of these large outfits that does chip seal, again, you're talking millions of dollars to have another company come in and do that for us. But we can do it and roughly we spend in a year to do two to three miles, costs us about a hundred thousand dollars in, in material. So it is a fraction of the cost of what it would, it would be to, to replace the road or sub it out.
Thank you, that definitely helpful. Mr. Casey, can we add that to the council request status report? So we could try to formulate a plan to try to avoid having to replace streets at a much higher cost than chip ceiling? Well, that means working with our partners or even, you know, other agencies to help us to plan to budget in the future or if this, you know, somehow we can try to do a little bit extra this year that would definitely be helpful to try to avoid future major expenses on the streets.
Okay, no, it makes sense.
We are looking at our virtual We are looking at our virtual AWC annual conference, June 22nd through the 25th, 2021. And I believe we're looking for how many attendees, Mr. Casey, is that two and?
Typically in the past, we've sent up to three when we had the in-person conferences. This year, the virtual conference registration, I believe Jackie is $100. And so no travel costs and a slightly lower registration fee. So I know we've sent up to three members of council in past years. It, it, it's kind of council's discretion, how, how many you wish to send this year. But among those that you send, you will need to select someone as your voting delegate.
And how many voting delegates do we get?
I believe we get one.
We get three voting delegates.
Thank you.
The, and normally, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor, just so I can add for the record. As AWC past president, I receive an invitation. It does not cost the city for me to attend the event.
Thank you. So we're looking for three volunteers as voting delegates and potentially to attend the virtual conference, uh, June 22nd to the 25th. If council doesn't object, I'd like to be one of those participants.
I would like to serve as a voting delegate.
Okay. So that makes the three of us. Is there anyone else interested? All right. So it sounds we have our three attendees and voting delegates, Mr. City Manager and Jackie. If you could get those registrations in place and inform them who our voting delegates are that we could, uh, select our, you know, AWC representation.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Board of Trustees for the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada, letter of support for Elizabeth Alba. Mr. City Manager, do you want to give us an update on this?
Uh, sure. Actually, uh, this is, uh, well, Director Alba has, uh, served on the state level for this organization in the past and actually served as, as, uh, actually the state level chair or president. At the state level in, 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 uh, 2016, 17. Uh, she's now seeking appointment to, uh, the, the international for sort of international, US and Canada, so binational, uh, association for public treasurers. And in order to be considered, uh, she needs a letter of support from the governing body of the jurisdiction that she represents. And so we wanted to bring this forward to council's consideration. And it would be a, a letter from Mayor Guerrero supporting Director Alba's application to the Board of Trustees for the Association of Public Treasurers. Elizabeth knows a lot more about this particular organization than I do. So either of us would be happy to answer any questions from council. But certainly encourage your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I would, without objection.
Counselor Stucci, what was that?
I would move without objection, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council members, any questions or comments on this, uh, letter of support for Mr. Alba?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that I would wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support it.
Okay. So without objection, uh, we'd like to, it sounds like we'd like to sign this letter of support for Ms. Alba. If you have no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
I'll have it with the rest of the documents if you have time tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. So it sounds like we'll be sending this letter tomorrow and congratulations, Ms. Alba and, uh, represent as well in this, uh, Association of Public Treasurers. All right, Mr. Casey, we up, up, up next we have our upcoming council meetings.
So we're entering June and we'll have three items on your workshop for June 7th. We're working with the local Rotary for an update on the skate park proposal and plans for Central Park. Uh, Director Alba will be providing us a update on our pool reopening plans. We did get a little bit of a curve ball thrown at us recently with the announcement from the state that we'll be going to essentially very relaxed or they're, they're further relaxing the restrictions as of July 1st. We've been aiming and are still aiming for a June 15th, 14th opening date. But the state has not yet released the new pool guidance for July 1st and beyond. So we're eager to see what, uh, what that entails. So hopefully by June 7th, we'll be able to give you more of an update on all the plans for reopening the pool on June 14th. And then, uh, last item and probably our, our most substantial item on that evening's workshop is we've received from the US Treasury, uh, many pages of guidance regarding the, uh, uh, American Rescue Plan Act allocations. We have not yet received from the state their guidance or direction for how they will be dispersing those funds, although we know they're working on that process as we speak. So we don't yet know when exactly the funds will be released to us or by what mechanism or with what requirements. But we do want to start bringing to council a variety of, of options for how you might, uh, choose to allocate the funds. Invite further input on what that could look like. And then roll that into the discussions that we'll be having and gearing up for the second quarter budget amendments in July. So that'll be just kind of the first step, putting that roadmap together for federal, uh, the ARP, uh, funding allocation. June 14th meeting has a fair amount of public works activity on it. We'll have the, uh, uh, Midvale Road, uh, construction contract award. We'll have the FAA, uh, airport master plan that we talked about earlier this evening. We also are getting a coronavirus response, uh, relief stimulus from FAA for the airport. And Director Fisher will be talking about that. We also will be having a discussion and possible action on the, uh, transportation improvement plan. We have to, uh, submit any updates to that by June 30th every year. And then we'll add to that the item that was pulled from tonight's agenda, uh, along with, uh, uh, we have the June 14th happens to fall on Flag Day. So we'll be doing proclamation for Flag Day. And then June 28th, the main item we have currently listed there is the COVID-19 emergency declaration. We expect that most of that, uh, will be able to, uh, fall away once we, because we're expecting the, the state's orders to largely ease off after June 30th. There may be just a few minor procedural, um, elements to, that council will want to consider. Uh, so for example, if the state continues to, uh, expect to require for remote components as parts of meetings as options. We know that we might need, uh, uh, some further consideration of, of, uh, members not attending in person. Cause the current rules, uh, council's rules only allow, I believe, for three, um, remote attendance per year under the underlying rules, but those have been suspended during the COVID emergency. So that should be a pretty, uh, much shorter resolution than what you've seen in the past. Um, that's June.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Up next we have Adam's from City Manager and Department Heads.
All right. Um, speaking of COVID, I'll start with that. Currently, as of tonight, the Yakima County has passed 31,000 COVID cases, uh, 31,014. We've had 425 COVID related deaths. Although our current trends are very, very good. Yakima County still has the unfortunate distinction of having had the highest overall infection rate per capita of any county in Washington state during the pandemic. Eleven residents are hospitalized and we're currently in phase three of the state's reopening framework. As of May 21st, 42.34% of Yakima County residents over the age of 16 have been fully vaccinated. Um, that compares to about 53% statewide. Nationally, the United States is about 33.1 million cases and 590,000 deaths. And just over 39% of the US population is fully vaccinated. As you mentioned, uh, the state still plans to lift most COVID-19 restrictions on, on June 30th. Last, late last Friday afternoon, the state did release new executive orders to align, uh, the masking, uh, requirements with the CDC's recent guidance on masking. And like you, we've not had much time to review in detail how this will affect our operations, but I, I can share a few quick highlights. Concurrent with the governor's orders, the State Department of Labor and Industries on Friday issued new state masking requirements for employers. Fully vaccinated employees do not have to wear a mask or socially distance at work. However, employers must confirm that each worker who chooses not to wear a mask is fully vaccinated. Either by having the worker sign a document attesting to their status or by providing proof of the vaccination. Employers are also going to be required by LNI to track these verification, then provide those records to LNI upon request. All persons, regardless of vaccination status, must still wear their masks in public transportation settings like aircraft and trains and buses, in healthcare facilities, homeless shelters, schools, K-12 schools, and in jail or corrections facilities. The leadership team and I will be discussing these directives in more detail at our regular meeting tomorrow morning. To be able to provide, uh, guidance and information to city employees affected by this. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to the department heads. Uh, let's start with Finance Director Alba. Sorry, there's a siren going by.
First, I would like to thank Mayor and Council for the letter of support. It means a lot to me. Um, I think that this organization is, uh, one that has a lot of good things that they do for finance individuals. And, uh, having that network available to me would be a great resource to our city. Regarding the pool, we have hired the pool manager, two assistant managers and, um, 11 lifeguards. We are leaving the applications open. So if anyone is aware of someone that is interested in being a lifeguard, we are still taking applications and filling those positions. Um, we are starting the pool managers, uh, this week in City Hall. Since our pool and, uh, everything was kind of torn apart, we will be utilizing them to help get signs back up. Make sure that our, uh, safety and cleaning supplies are adequately stocked. And then, uh, they're going to be doing the, um, operations manual with me. Um, and just kind of give me some more support in the, you know, side of things that really just I needed, I, I needed some people is what I needed. So we got them on board, um, and they, they will be in and out of the pool and start getting things racked up, wrapped up for us. And then as far as, uh, court, everything in the court is going as planned. Um, really they've, um, been doing a great job. We've heard all, you know, all around the state that there was backlogs of cases. Our court has managed to keep up and, um, we really haven't had those same issues. In the finance department, we are working on, um, something that I mentioned last time with Delilah, uh, pushing down some of her daily tasks. And so she will be, um, more of a face during budget season. You will probably get more information directly from her. I will be expecting her to take more of a lead on, on some of that. And she kind of got thrown into the fire last year. So this year she hopefully will start from the beginning and be very well prepared instead of just kind of getting thrown to the, like I said, thrown in the fire. And that's all I have.
Uh, Fire Chief Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and Council Members. You hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, I don't really have anything new. There, we're going to be doing some, uh, stuff this week over on Reathway or possibly the airport, which is a testing hose. We got probably 15, 20,000 feet of hose. So we're going to be out, uh, we normally do this, uh, sort of in the fire, at the fire station or down at, uh, at the community center, but with all the, all the hustle and bustle going on down to the community center. We, we chose to do it at Reathway out there, um, behind the, uh, Port Authority's business office. So for the next, uh, pretty much every day this week, uh, just in case, uh, anyone sees us out there and curious what's going on while we're out there testing hose. And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Escalera.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, not a lot. I just, uh, I'm currently in attendance of Lasbik right now, which is their fall or their spring conference. Talking about the reforms and some other issues that are going on around the country and in the state. Uh, we just recently hired our, our last vacancy. So he's, uh, he is a Sunnyside, uh, born and raised. Graduated at Grizzly, the whole nine yards here locally. And, uh, so he is brand new and expected to go to the academy, uh, July 27th. So he comes on board on the 16th of June. So that should fill all of the, uh, operational positions in patrol. Until, uh, the next batch of retirements for, for right now. So other than that, I don't have, I don't have anything else at the moment.
All right. Thank you. And Director Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Uh, yeah, I have, I have a few items. Um, okay. So we are filling the pool this week. Mitch did inform me today. They, they're cleaning the last bit of the, the debris out of the pool from the last couple of windstorms. And we will have it filled this week. Takes about three and a half days or so to fill it. And of course, uh, some may have noticed that we are also painting the exterior of the, of the pool house. Um, the mechanical room got, uh, they had the mural painted on it last year. And, um, so that, that kind of got painted for us. Um, but they are out right now, um, painting the, the bath house. And, uh, should be done here at the end of this week. And, um, one other thing I have is, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, uh, you may notice up on Sunnyside Avenue, we have an old dead tree. Um, it's up there just, uh, just east of Bridge Street. And that tree will be coming down. We will coordinate with, uh, with the residents up there and SCID and of course fire and police. And that road will be shut down, um, temporarily until they, they, they top the tree and, and haul off the debris. And that's all I have.
Very good. Clerk Renteria?
So as I mentioned a few meetings ago, if everyone could bring their tablets, we could use the microphones, um, on the tablets themselves, just like Mayor does. Mayor's sound is run smooth straight from his tablet. So if everybody brings their tablet and you want to speak, you can just speak directly from, to, from your tablet. Um, and then the only time we'll use the microphones is for the people that are remote. So I just, if you guys want to try it that way, then, uh, I just need a few minutes with you guys before the meeting. So if you guys come early with the tablets, I can help you guys. It just takes a target of like 10 minutes before the meeting and I can't, I gotta get this set up first. So it depends on what you guys want to do. I know the change here is, uh, the space there isn't ready for this. So I think that using the tablet microphone will be better. So you can still use, if that's how that would have been, you have Counselor Henry, you can use that too. I just use the same application on. And I think that will help with the noise issue of, of the audio. Um, so we can test it that way next week.
Is that it, Mr. Casey?
That should do it.
A quick question on the pool itself. Would it be available for council members to do a tour of the repairs that got done inside?
We could take a look at that. Uh, Shane, when do you think it'll be in a position that's safe for visitors to? Cause I know between you and, and Elizabeth, we've got, um, a lot of activity, just kind of getting it ready for use. When would be, about what time do you think would be good for bringing council members through? All right. How about this? We'll, we'll, let's talk about that tomorrow and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get back to council with some ideas on dates and times.
Sounds good. That'll be perfect. All right, council members, uh, there being no further business to come before council and without objection. I adjourn this meeting at 8:14 PM. Thank you everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.